But I just want to let you guys know that Doug and I and Bill just met with Dr. Joe and some hospital folks and some county folks. Because the county is getting ready to submit a second, another variance request. And I can forward that to everybody. And they're, they're not asking for my signature this time. But I just want everyone to know that the county is doing that and they'd like to know that in theory this, the city is supporting them. So I will email that to you guys. Okay.
Madam Mayor, we are live.
Fantastic. Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, it is still Tuesday, June 2nd. And, and we are having a city council budget workshop. We call this the big picture budget workshop. And it is a work session. Usually during our work sessions, we hold those in front of the public for full transparency. Anyone can watch us at work, but they are not usually set up for public participation. We have all the department heads here and all the city councillors as we talk about our priorities going forward for our 2021 budget. So, uh, welcome to any members from the public who are here to, to watch us at work. I would say that it would help us a lot if you want to tell us what you think that you'd contact us after the meeting. And, and refrain from passing notes or jump it up with Q and A in the middle of our discussion. Um, so that we can talk about our budget and move on. If we were doing this meeting in person, we'd all be around a table at the pavilion and you'd be sitting in chairs at the, the edge of the room watching us. Um, and we're going to try and replicate that as best we can with Zoom. So welcome, thanks for coming. Um, and then let's get down to business. I am going to turn it over to the city finance director, Shani Wittenberg, who's going to give us an overview of why we do this meeting and a little bit of the history.
All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry about that. I am going to share my screen. I have a short PowerPoint just to talk through each of the major funds of the city. Give you a little bit of a framework, framework as well. Um, and this big picture meeting started a couple of years ago. Only just before we kick off the budget as department heads and supervisors to request, our next year's, what we think we need for next year. Prior to the whole process starting, we came up with the idea to bring the council in to kind of have all the department heads hear what city council is thinking. So that we can best meet those needs. Well, it's what we need to for each individual department. So that's just a little bit of a background. I'm going to share my screen for PowerPoint, just one second. I don't know. Where did it go? Sometimes me finding something on a shared screen is a little bit crazy. Maybe I need to do that again, just one second. Let's try that again. There we go. Sure, okay. So you should all be able to see this. Basically, it's a PDF instead of a PowerPoint. It just runs a little bit better than a PowerPoint. So basically, this is our big picture discussion for 2021. It is about a month behind. We usually do this the first part of May. But with what's going on in the world, we thought delaying it a little bit was a good idea. So, basically, just to kind of show you a, a trend on, you know, revenues here is our blue line. The expenditures is the orange line. You can kind of see over the years how it has moved. And you'll see like in the last couple of years where revenues has exceeded expenditures. That's mainly sales tax and the general fund coming in higher than we anticipated. And then down here is our undesignated fund balance. And then this yellow line is where we think our target reserve is, which is six months of operating expenditures. And feel free, if anybody has a question while I'm going through this, to interrupt me. Moving on to OBT and RSE, so Office of Business and Tourism, or Retail Sales Enhancement Fund and the Tourism Promotional Fund. We kind of put those together in a box because they do kind of the same thing, one for tourists and one for our city residents. This one's a little more squirrely. There's been a lot of different leadership throughout the years. And so it has taken on a little bit of a different vibe each year. In 2020, I will say that if you remember, we combined DART into the RSE portion with a transfer from the general fund to cover those DART expenditures. So, we do not have a formal policy for OBT and a reserve. So that's why you will not see that line on this chart. Moving on, Black Canyon Golf Course. This chart is in, was in our budget packets last year. Basically, just to show the revenues that are generated at the golf course versus what is transferred from the general fund. The general fund will probably always transfer some money to the Black Canyon Golf Course, but it is an asset in our, in our city. And if it wasn't a golf course, it would be a glorified park because it is part of the deed restriction. These higher years of transfer are basically capital improvements that we've done out at the Black Canyon Golf Course. The Water Fund. You'll see it as well, the reserves are very healthy in the Water Fund. And that's a lot to be able to do capital projects that are coming up or things that we anticipate in future years. The reserve, target reserve kind of is all over the place as well, depending on how many capital projects we had in a given year. Is, makes a, a big. It just makes it look funky.
Would project, would, if we needed to give Project Seven money, if they do some big projects, would that come out of this fund?
Yes, it would come out of the Water Fund.
So, uh, Shani, is, is the green line like money in the bank, basically?
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and that's what we would draw on in a situation that like Barbara mentioned.
Correct.
Does this reflect the money that's been loaned to the Mura?
It does. Yep.
Where, where would that hit be with, is that, I mean, there should be a blip on the graph, right?
Yeah, and I think you can kind of see it here as far as, and it's kind of a, it's kind of weird because it takes the whole fund into perspective. So if we had some large capital projects and the loan in a year, you know, versus a lot of revenues and the loan in a year. It's, it's a little harder to pinpoint, but I want to say we did that back in 18-ish. Between 17 and 18, I would say that that is probably got something to do with that downturn. But we've also done some capital projects with the Move Mo project that we did through the streets. We did a lot of water improvements as well. So you'll see those capital, capital projects bring it down.
They're like, they're right here at the top of the mountain, coming down.
Yeah.
One, one comment I would make on the, uh, Project Seven. I think Project Seven, the expansion they were looking at, they were looking at paying for that by increased water rates rather than as a capital expenditure, I believe.
Which, yeah, which would still affect this fund because that's part of our, part of, includes that.
Okay, but Doug, what you're saying is Project Seven wasn't going to come to us and say, hand us $3 million. They were going to increase what we pay for water and we were going to have to figure that out.
That's my understanding. And they were looking at spreading that out over a number of years, maybe starting to add a little bit to the cost of the water each year for the next two or three years to get it up where they would have enough to make their, their annual payments.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think there would be room for negotiation with Project Seven on that. So if we decided it's more advantageous for the city to do a one-time capital outlay and put money in their bank and not increase our rates ongoing. We have the ability to look at both those options where some of the other smaller communities that are part of Project Seven wouldn't have that uh, ability to pay a lot of capital money upfront. So we'd need to run a financial analysis at that time and decide what, which route would be best for the city.
That's a good option.
Is that going to be a problem, Bill? Because, uh, I happen to be on Tri-County Water.
What do you mean?
Well, if the city, the city's going to make a, a capital payment toward that to keep the water rates down.
Oh, no, because it would, it would come out of our water account and so.
Wouldn't come out of the.
It wouldn't be your money, it would be our water customers' money we'd be using. It's just sitting in the water capital fund, the water reserve.
Okay.
Wouldn't be general fund if that's who you're asking.
Well, no, I was just looking at it from a standpoint of, there are a lot, a lot of people who are on Tri-County Water within the city limits.
They haven't been paying into the water fund, uh, at all, which is where the money would.
Right. This isn't the city's water fund, this is the users of City Waters Fund.
Yeah, they're looking at, if they were looking at taking the, the fees up for each household. Where I was coming from.
Tri-County's rates would directly affect you then. So if Tri-County's rates went up, they would, that directly reflect in your water bill.
Yes.
Because you're on a city water user.
And if the city does something to, uh, help keep their rates down for the city residents, that's kind of splitting it between city residents and one water system and.
But it's not, Doug, because you haven't been putting money into the Water Fund. You know, you could, you could argue that Tri-County should have been saving money. Sure, you could go and say as a customer, you wish you would have been doing the same thing as the city. But you're, we're not mixing general fund and Water Fund there. That's why they're in a separate account. In fact, your question is a great example of why we keep them in a separate account and we don't just put the fees for water in the general fund. Hey, David, can you mute your microphone? It's picking up some noise, thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to add that, um, Project Seven likes to keep their water rates consistent amongst all their customers. So I think if the city wanted to use some of those funds for that, it may end up that we would loan some of those funds and then they repay back the water and sewer fund on more of a debt service operation as opposed to adjustment of the, of the, of the rates and stuff. That way they can keep everything uniform amongst all the customers, which has been traditionally how they've done things.
That's, that's good to know. And I think, I think we've gotten off into the weeds a little, but this shows your council's paying attention to your charts, Shani.
Very good. Very good. All right, so let's move on to the sewer fund. And you can see where the sewer fund had a very large reserve back 10 years ago. And it's come down quite a bit. And those are different master plan projects that we have completed without increasing rates to the ratepayers. So. Um, and then the last slide I have for you is the trash and recycling slide. And we talk about this a lot, how, um, back, you know, in the early, um, you know, 2012, 2013, we purchased a bunch of the single stream recycling containers. And rather than borrowing money to do that and paying interest, we took it out of the reserves and then we built them back up. So now it's really kind of looking almost like a sideways S. We've definitely increased our, our fund balance. And here's where, um, that yellow line is the target reserve. So that fund has recovered really well. That being said, there are some changes to trash and recycling that are affecting our expenditures that may affect some sort of a rate increase in the future. So we'll get into that a little bit later in the, in the meeting or at a different time during our budget process for 2021.
So it, is that where we might get into the cost of the recycle program and how that's impacting these funds?
Yeah, see, this, this gap in the budget for 2020. A few things happened last year, such as the increase to our rates to waste management to dispose of our trash. I believe that was a 14% increase, um, to the contract. So that's, this discrepancy here is a lot to do with that. Projecting into the future and figuring out exactly how we go about, um, making sure that this fund stays healthy is going to be one of our 2021 challenges.
Okay, all right. And at some point, you guys will run some analysis software and then make a proposal that city council would, if, if it impacted like, like billing or something, then.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh, thanks.
Yeah, and Jim, Jim Scheid has worked a lot on the trash and recycling issue. He's actually got some good information. And, um, prior to COVID, we were on, you know, on track to sit down and really discuss those in depth and get a little bit of play. So if we don't talk about it today, we will definitely talk about it during our budget prep for 2021.
Okay, cool.
So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and let you all, um, kind of take over the meeting and, and discuss some of the projects. I know Scott also sent out, um, I think it was a Word document, talking about the different projects that, um, he sees on the horizon. And as a city group, we've talked about, um, on the horizon, so we can also jump into that document as well.
I think that's exactly what we ought to do next is look at the City of Montrose engineering document.
Great. I don't know that Scott is here.
He is, I'm looking at him.
Blind spot.
Blind spot, definitely.
Um, I think I'll start with the screen share. So this is pretty similar to what we did last year. And this is, you know, think of this as a shopping list. By no means, don't feel like we're trying to push any kind of projects. It's meant to, um, show you what's out there and what's been talked about. Just because a lot of times we talk about them in January and forget about them come July. And so just trying to keep things on the radar of what has been discussed throughout the budget year or what's carried over from previous years where, you know, we, we wanted to and, and things got pushed, but we still wanted to keep it a priority. So, um, that's kind of what this is geared toward. Um, can everybody see that list, okay? Awesome. So broke it up, kind of like we did last year. So you got general fund, streets.
We lost.
Oh, yeah. I'll put it in a place where I can see easier, okay, sorry. So, general funds type stuff and then breaking into enterprise fund. And then URA, you know, in past years was bigger expenditures. Not as much coming up unless there's, uh, future phases, but just keeping that on the radar too, so. Let me zoom in here to get it on one page. Uh, so, large general fund capital projects, usually we've spent, um, depending on funding sources and grants, um, between two and five million per year on, you know, either streets or trail type projects. We're kind of trending back towards our more or less base level, which is, you know, one and a half to two million when we're, when we're funding in-house. Without those external funding sources. A lot of those external funding sources come up as a nice surprise or a nice bonus. You know, partway through the year, depending on grant cycles and such, but, um, so obviously as those come up, those aren't reflected here. But stuff we do know about, probably the biggest one, uh, that's been on the radar and talked about a lot is the Woodgate realignment. So we don't have a formal cost estimate on that going into formal budget, so we will. I put it at 1.1 million to start, but slightly less than that. We have the traffic studies done and the alignment more or less figured out. There's really, we thought we were going to have several options, but the way the geometries and traffic models worked out, it kind of just boils down to one. So we're at a point now where we're engaging the landowner before we go to the public with that, um, to get them folded in. Depending on how those acquisitions go, we have six months to get those before we would look to bid that. So that's still tracking well, I mean, with the.
Scott, Scott, has the landowner's attitude improved since the last time we started this conversation?
Um, we haven't engaged.
And let's just remember, we've got, we've got an audience and stuff today, this is a public duty, I'm just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we haven't engaged them yet. Uh, that's on this week's radar, uh, to have the first kickoff meeting.
So, hey, Scott, um, the, the 1.1 million, that is sort of an educated guess based on the design you've already done now?
That's based on the conceptual design. So when we get more detailed design, we'll put, we'll break it down into the, you know, 90 line items of the, of the bid and put a more detailed cost estimate to it. So those, you know, I always kind of high and then, and fine tune and it usually gets smaller as we fine tune.
Okay, you're pretty good about making those estim.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's kind of easy because we do a lot of street and utility projects. And so it's, it's nice that we have a good tracker or a good record of knowing what things cost.
Don't let them fool you, it's not easy.
I don't think it's easy.
Um, another one that I don't think we have talked about, but came up. We, our street crews have been having some, doing, doing a lot of repairs on a bridge at the end of Birch Street. So this is right in front of the Black Canyon Golf Course. Not on the golf course itself, but on Birch Street where it enters that little cul-de-sac neighborhood. The foundations on that are compromised and, um, it's not at risk of collapsing. Like, it's, it's structurally sound, but, um, you know, it may not be for much longer. So it's another one of those, um, projects that you kind of don't have much choice. It's a single way in and out of that neighborhood. But, you know, I could push a year or two if necessary, but it's, it's getting pretty right. Project we've been talking about a lot is a public workshop. Now, so we've kind of tried to just get focused on the PD initially, um, but the next big kind of project would be getting going on the design of the shop. So that's all the, fine tuning, all the needs analyses, doing a lot of the environmental. So we have underground buried tanks out there and industrial uses that we want to make sure we have our head wrapped around all of that and the implications. And then starting on layout and drainage and utilities and design of the, um, building itself. That would, you know, if that product were to be to go, you'd break up some between the general fund for, you know, public works elements. And then some of that would also go to the enterprise fund for, um, because we all live in the, in the same house out there. Haven't put a dollar amount to that yet. We don't really know what that scope's going to be depending on how we phase that. Make it, you can buy it off in one year or you could get started and, and do phased pieces and work on, you know, kind of the preliminary due diligence work first. And then after you get buying on that, go into detailed design, so. Um, anything, we, so, you know, parks like amphitheaters down here, um, some of the other park elements. But as far as straight general fund capital, I think, want to talk about there.
If I could just add on the, uh, public works facility design piece as a reminder to everyone. Couple of years ago, we sold the Banner Road property, which is, was owned by the Superfund. And we sold that. And so we have the money from that sale sitting in the reserve account in the sewer fund. So if we wanted to get started on the site design and layout and, and actually contract that out, we have, I think it's about a million dollars. Just over a million dollars sitting in there. Shani, correct me if I'm wrong on the amount. Uh, but that would definitely get us going, uh, for, you know, a year-long study and analysis and design on the site layout.
And Scott, I'll say, I think you should keep going through the whole list rather than taking questions between each one because they all really tie together, even though you've broken them out. So that would be my recommendation. Otherwise, I think we won't get back to you going through them all.
Good. So going to streets, um, you know, we've done kind of a streets maintenance blitzes over the past couple of years. Um, if we want to do something similar, you know, streets, uh, public works itself manages a lot of like patching and small routine maintenance. Um, but if we get into large contract work where we're doing large overlay projects and stuff, generally those would come into engineering. So, um, if, at some point, I want to talk about the capital plan. Um, as you see on that, uh, the street maintenance is a big problem. You know, 40-plus million dollar problem and gets bigger by the day. So whatever money could be thrown at that, it could be used very quickly and relatively easily. So, um, so I put TBD, whatever you, whatever you can find, we'll use it. Small little sidewalk project, 6700 Miami, there's a, a jog out there by the, uh, East Cal, or Combine East subdivision. Where you have a couple of sidewalk systems and no connectivity between them. Uh, that one comes up every year and, um, there's a little bit of property acquisition associated with that too. So that's, uh, that's what that project is. That new Golden Gate Petroleum that's going in by Home Depot, uh, one of the potential, uh, projects we've, are, that have been thrown around to support that project, um, while providing dual benefit to the city is a missing link sidewalk project to connect from it down to, uh, the River Landing, or not, not the landing, Hawk Parkway, kind of development area there by, uh, Stonehouse. Always just a placeholder for new development infrastructure support. So, you know, as development projects for hotels or big commercial parks or, or housing need projects come in, you know, so this is like outside of the URA. If any of these come gel together through budget season, um, we, if we're going to help a project of those type, we usually like to do it in the form of infrastructure. So they're not giving cash to a developer, but rather when they're breaking ground, we're breaking ground and helping to construct the infrastructure that we own and maintain ultimately anyway. Um, because it has dual benefit beyond the development. So that could be utilities or, um, streets.
And the, the two biggest things sitting out there right now, uh, would be Chad Horning Developments. If he goes through with purchasing the property by Otter Road, to put in a shopping center plaza type thing. And then, uh, housing projects along the river behind, uh, heading south from Home Depot. Or from the pizza place by Home Depot, that whole area heading south. He's looking at buying that as well, as well as all of River Landing. So that would probably be our biggest requests in the next several months. And Matt Miles building multifamily housing by Chupita Road near Cobble Creek. Should be the biggest development infrastructure type projects. That would be new to council. And then we have the, uh, the already ongoing project with, uh, Dr. Rosiano and Montrose Dermatology that, uh, I'll be talking to them this week to see if they want to get on the next council work session.
Some of the smaller dark projects, so some of the alley redos, um, the historic jail project. Um, some of those are kind of in the planning phases, but as those start to gel, um, there might be some budget asks, um, to support those from an infrastructure standpoint. Um, and then La Raza Neighborhood Sidewalk Improvement Projects, those seem to come up quite a bit, especially with the trail done now. I think the lowest hanging fruit would be a corridor down North Ninth, um, to connect that over. Um, since we have the trailhead at North Ninth connecting to, um, the new connect trail.
Hey Scott, in, in that same area, what about the sidewalk that doesn't exist on Fourth Street west of Townsend? I got a lot of discussion during my campaign about how the kids have to walk through the mud to get to school every day.
Also, I have Fourth and Ninth, that's kind of, but, yeah, I think, I didn't have, I didn't have anything particular in mind. I'd, I'd heard about from a council member, the, um, Ninth Corridor. I think they're all, they're all pretty low hanging fruit because there's.
Both of those are the routes to school from, um, from Tartea Flats, so.
Scott, would it be possible to break those out into two separate line items? Uh, the North Ninth Corridor and the Fourth Street across that.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be good for future discussion, that's.
I think that'll just clarify our thoughts on that as.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, as we get into deeper in budget season, yeah, we'll have, we can put diagrams. If you guys are interested in these projects, um, see them gain some traction, we can put diagrams and, and budgetary costs.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Very much.
Um, going into parks, the big one is the amphitheater. So we've been saving for several years. To date, we've saved one and a half million dollars. The latest estimate on that for everything, so the construction, uh, architecture, oversight, product management, testing, all of that, um, is 3.6 million. So that leaves a project balance of 2.1. Um, so whether we're constructing or saving, however that's going to go, um, that's kind of what's outstanding right now. Um, am I correct on those numbers, everybody? I haven't been too involved with that project. Um, am I correct on those numbers, everybody? I haven't been too involved with that project.
Yep. On this.
I see a thumbs up. That's for me. Um, and now I can get my grid view on the other sheet. There you go. Okay. Uh, in support of the amphitheater, they've talked about doing a overflow parking lot down at Cerise's parking lot, or down off of the main, um, paved parking lots. Uh, if this were to be done, it would be a city project, um, sixty five thousand to cover all the materials needed to, uh, to grade out and, create a gravel overflow parking lot.
Would that be on the land we just, we acquired recently across the street from the dog park?
Yes, yep. Um, yeah, two years ago or something. I'm trying to remember. I wasn't involved with that acquisition, but yeah, I think a couple of years ago, yeah. I'm seeing head nods. Um, uh, talked about potentially contributing to, uh, Park and Waterfall Canyon. So that's the subdivision out west of town. Uh, it's the big Matt Miles subdivision out there off of, oh, it's like the last city subdivision as you're heading west on Highway ninety, um, Western Marine Road. Uh, they, that area of town doesn't have a park. Uh, Matt had, uh, had an area part within the subdivision kind of slated for a park. Um, in, in the name of, um, improving the quality of life in that area and supporting affordable housing, which a lot of that area is great workforce housing. Um, or one idea that's been thrown about around is, is helping to build that park. Um, as a contribution to, to keep their costs down, um, and do more affordable housing. Uh, the Chupita Trail Connection. So with increased trail use, especially through the pandemic, we've had a lot of, or a few, um, reaching out about, how difficult it is to get across Chupita Road at the southern end of the trail network. Um, and then for those, uh, many of those are going down to Chupita Lakes. And so you're kind of along that portion of Chupita is county right of ways. So we have less control over it, but they have expressed interest in redoing, that kind of skewed intersection there going into the Riverbend RV Park. At the same time, improving, uh, the situation for pedestrians to have kind of a direct path down to Chupita Park. So, we got high hopes on that. Um, if that's kind of a county partnership, might be pretty limited dollars to get a pretty big benefit there. So.
Scott, are they talking about doing sidewalks to connect that?
Yeah, sidewalk. Connect your trail. Cause right now there's, it's just kind of haphazard working along the shoulder. Uh, sidewalks are, you know, without the other infrastructure like curb and gutter and stuff, it's sometimes not worth this hard sidewalk when, it's just going to get eroded on or, or, uh, um, something's going to get redone in the near future type things. This lane is dark, support, um, infrastructure improvements. That's kind of in the same lines up here. Um, park, park style ones, if they have banners or decorative stuff downtown, things of that sort. Um, I can't remember, Chelsea, was there another project that we had in mind in this one? Dark or park stuff.
Sorry, is it Google Hangouts or Zoom? I can never find the mute button. Um, no. Yeah, I think that most of the things that we talked about would fall under streets for the following year, but we haven't created the next year's work plan because this one's sort of been waylaid. So, um, you know, there could be, like I said, most of the stuff will probably fall under streets at this, uh, juncture.
Um, so the redo of Centennial Plaza. So I think the long-term vision, it's still being worked on, but, uh, generally Centennial Plaza would include its existing footprint and also expand towards the police department for one large plaza, um, including First Street. Uh, the project could be broken up into two years. Um, this would be year one. So year one would be the existing area, you know, you plan for the whole area. Um, and then focus construction on the existing plaza to get something in place. Um, and not interfere with the construction of the PD. And as soon as the PD construction is done, finish out the southern end of that plaza so that we kind of have some plaza area at all times. Um, uh, so there are places for people to go to hold events, um, uh, throughout that.
So there, there may be some value, Scott, in letting the, I mean, once the police building's done, people have an ability to sort of see the area and visualize it better than just, some folks like me looking at a piece of paper. It's kind of hard to imagine, uh, what the space.
All of that balance is going to look like.
Could offer. Yeah. So I'm just thinking, if we don't go too far before the building's done, in terms of planning, then people might have some ideas and input that would be affected by being able to actually see the, finished area.
Yeah, that's a great point. And then all of this will kind of take place over a pretty long period throughout construction. So, I think the hope would be more or less hitting the finish line at the same time. So we also don't want a PD. And then with an active construct, a new PD with an active construction site in front of it. So, um, as it starts to take shape, we'll still be in the design phases because it'll take a while to build the PD. So.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Yeah, definitely. Um, and then continued La Raza Park improvements that, um, get talked about quite a bit. Just a generic place where there didn't necessarily have anything in mind, or I guess that's a Jim thing. If there's anything in mind under that line, but just things we keep talking about.
Uh, I think there are several ideas that have been thrown around for La Raza Park. Um, some of which I know we're trying to go out for some small grants to, um, to get some pieces of that now, but, um, uh, it's continuous, I guess, in the ideas that come up for that park. So basketball courts, lights, um, you know, they're, they're, the list could be, and listen, I'm sure maybe you all have heard other ideas for that park as well.
Um, so property acquisitions, small, so I just put it there, but usually we don't necessarily advertise these. Um, we don't want to go into a negotiation with them knowing how much we budgeted. Um, so for that reason, we usually don't budget them. Um, but, uh, a couple of big ones are a couple on the radar. Um, there's a small piece of property in Cerise Park that we just need to get cleaned up. That's a small triangle off the edge of the parking lot. Pretty small dollars there. Um, for long-term viability of the public workshop, there's a lot that's west of there behind the, um, Salvation Army that we're currently leasing. Um, it's working out well, but, um, be a great lot to have going into the design of the public workshop. So, um, Jim, um, and Anne are working on, um, seeing if we can get that property purchased. And then it's for that small sidewalk project, um, that here. Um, we did have, you know, one that's coming up this year, a big one, um, dollar wise will be the acquisition for the Woodgate realignment. And, uh, that one is, uh, in a perfect world should be expanded in twenty twenty as long as we get through those acquisitions. On the utilities, any, um, cool, there's the end. Uh, so enterprise fund, continue shop stuff. Um, the Woodgate subdivision sewer rebuilds. So this is that subdivision south of Otter Pond, south of Otter Road. That, uh, has a essentially completely failing sewer system. We budgeted for, um, a good chunk of that this year, but, with COVID and then how complicated the project has turned out to be now that we're getting into design. Um, it might be broken up into two years. Um, so we'll have more detail on that because we should be bidding that pretty soon. Um, but this is a placeholder. Um, there might be some carryover on that project.
Scott, would that be a, would that be the kind of project that the city, paid for or that the folks in that area would ultimately bear the cost?
So in a perfect world, so what happened, the history on that subdivision is it used to have a, a localized lagoon pond system treating just the neighborhood. It failed. Um, they got into a bind because it was in the county and then the city took it over. Um, in a great world, when that was taken over, it should have included an SID for its replacement because it was not built to any kind of standard. It should have been, so kind of like Riverwood where if you want to come under our system, we're going to build it to our standards. Um, and then we'll spread the cost of the capital expenditure over twenty years. I think that horse has left the barn. Um, we'll do some research. Um, it's a good question because I, we haven't investigated that yet to see if something does exist that we don't know about where that's happened. Um, but as far as we know, we ended up essentially accepting that system. And so now we own and maintain this public infrastructure. So that gets spread amongst, um, the super fund.
So that's something that would come out of the, uh, capital reserve of the sewer fund?
Yeah, a big capital fund of sewers. Not necessarily.
The reserve, reserve right now shows a, a very healthy balance. But we're having that disjunction between the.
Yeah. Yeah. So right now, ins about equal outs. You know, those lines kind of parallel on that sewer graph. So, you know, capital projects are generally equalling revenues, capitals plus operating expenditures are equalling revenues these days. So this would just kind of fall into that. I don't think you, um, we're taking a big chunk out of reserve, whereas like some of these large water products, like the Sero Dam and the water tank, those will deplete reserves because, the one-time capital outlay is larger than, you know, your excess revenue for that year, if that makes sense. Um, speaking of our things, so the balance of Sunset Mesa, um, don't, we should have that bid here pretty soon. So we'll have a finer number on that, but, um, you know, it's a multimillion dollar project that will span two years. Um, last couple of years, we've been upgrading the water lines coming off of Project Seven. Uh, the very last piece of that is redoing our actual connection to Project Seven and the water meter out there. Um, uh, still working on the kind of scope of that. Um, so price to come on that. Uh, Sero will be wrapped up, um, but the price down the radar for a while and kind of independent of the dam is, we have an intake structure. So Sero reservoir is off system. It's a, it's filled off of a canal by a siphon that goes underneath Highway fifty. Um, so this is separate from the big siphon that carries the irrigation water. We have our own. Um, that's many, many years old, but, uh, the structure itself, the, anybody that's driven past Sero Summit knows the soils are pretty unstable up there. We have a structure that's kind of caving in on itself. They, retrofitted it twenty years ago. Um, the forces are strong enough. It's actually buckling the retrofit, the beams on the retrofit. So, um, we're working on the design of that now and would, um, look to get that essentially stabilized, um, in the next year or two. Treatment plant, master plan. So a lot of Dave's work recently has been focused on, the recent kind of planning efforts associated with the new treatment plant permits. So we have new discharge and effluent and testing requirements under the new, um, effluent permit for the treatment plant. But larger picture, we need to be looking at, um, where do we need to go for the treatment plant as far as expansion of the plant, uh, new treatment trains for nutrients? And then, uh, um, how does that work with, uh, the five twenty nine sewer boundary as things grow and, and what do we reasonably want to take in, into our sewer system? Um, you know, do we need other, another plant as development occurs? And then how do we also, at some point, how does that work with, uh, West Montreal Sanitation District? Um, as their effluent limit changes, because we're kind of in, in the same boat as far as the permitting world, um, and they're hydrologically upstream. Um, in the long term, I think those may become a regional, um, joint effort. So, getting our heads wrapped around that. I don't know if next year is the year for that or not, but, um, we'll keep, seeing where Dave lands with all the permitting stuff this year. Uh, new development infrastructure supports, the same as we talked about above, just the, uh, some of the utility elements of that can go to the enterprise fund if we're constructing water lines and sewer lines. And then one of the, uh, I think it's C I P three and the master plan, uh, we've knocked out the first couple. Um, but one of them is a larger diameter line, kind of in the up gradient. So we, we have a large lineup to the Sunshine Tank, which is our Sunnyside Tank, which is also Sunnyside Road. Um, but there's a gap between it and the Sunshine Tank. That's relatively small and long-term. You want a large trunk line kind of along the head of your system so that you can then distribute, insert like a manifold distributing down into the system to keep, maintain pressure and flow, um, throughout the system as development occurs. So it's not an immediate need. This is just staying ahead of, of city growth. And then the last one, and this is a good discussion point on the river project. Um, so there's a promissory note between the city and the U R A for the balance of the river projects. So that's one point one million. Um, that's, most of that's construction. So, um, not many of those dollars have been spent to date. With the current financial situation, the pandemic, um, the discussion has come up and we wanted to ask you if you want to consider moving that project out of here. So there's an option to do that in the winter of twenty one and twenty two, um, without any impacts to our grants. Um, it, uh, you know, the advantage of getting that done early is we've been talking about it for several years and the earlier you get it done, the earlier it can recover and start, um, getting better for marketing purposes and quality of life of, of having that great asset in town. Um, but it's, it's a softer need, um, compared to other things. So knowing that budgets may be tight, I wanted to throw that out there. Um, those projects or that money would come out as a reserve type loan, um, to the U R A that gets paid, repaid through TIF. Um, but those repayments are a twenty year thing. So just something to keep in mind. It ties up, um, capital dollars. And then, you know, the typical U R A stuff. So if there's a phase two, if a big project comes in on one of the things that aren't developed and they wanted to contribute to that. Um, you know, TBD on the price there. And then any, any of the, site development support, um, for the interior projects. A good example is the Montrose Dermatology Clinic. Um, the, uh, hotel, which is already funded and allocated. So the hotel isn't, it's, it's covered, but, um, but that's sort, that sort of project where, um, the U R A loans to help with horizontal site improvements, um, that get repaid through the TIF over time. Um, not almost commercial ones, a lot of them are repaid within several years. Sorry for that. Sorry if I bored you.
No, not boring.
It's a lot of information. Fire hose. Sorry.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's just go, let's just jump in with questions about these items before we move on to other stuff. So go ahead.
Okay, my, mine's pretty quick. Um, I, I don't know where parking lots come in. Um, I didn't see anything and, um, on North Second Street where the Tesla and the ChargePoint, um, chargers were going to happen, I think once COVID's over, they will still happen. And there's very little cost, but we were going to refinish, uh, the lot. So yeah, I wanted to make sure that that got on the list. I don't think it's a big item, but, um, it, I want to make sure it gets done when the time comes. Thank you.
I think we were planning on that for twenty twenty. So that would be this year, not for twenty twenty one, but we could, certainly adjust if that gets more delayed on the part of Tesla or ChargePoint.
Okay, great. Thanks, Anne.
Sure.
It feels like there's still a lot of unknowns, Scott. I mean, I get that this is big picture, but it just, it, it, feels like a lot of to be determined and a lot of, yeah, well, we'll see if that's needed. What would be helpful for you to hear from council? And I mean, if we don't have questions, what kind of comments do you want?
Um, I think at this stage, it's easy enough for us to just have prices to all of these. So there's no hard decisions by any point. I think, it's helpful to understand, you know, what people would really like to see from what they're hearing from the constituents. So we know where to focus most of our efforts, but that being said, at this stage, to put effort to all of these is not problematic by any means. Um, and then they just refine over time. So, uh, but I, it is always helpful to understand because, you know, everybody, all of, everybody hears ears of what they're hearing as, as needs in the community. So, um, if we can identify maybe some of the highest priority, um, that does help us focus some of our efforts.
Well, I think as council, we probably need to have a vague idea of how much money is available. So when our mind, we can sort of prioritize what we think is the most important down to the least. But, and I understand at this point, nobody's got the crystal ball to say how much money is going to be there in twenty twenty one, but we got to have some kind of vague idea.
I think it would help me to know just the basic costs of, uh, some of these projects. A couple of them in particular, the La Raza Neighborhood Sidewalks. I know that Mr. Shide had done kind of a quick thumbnail throw together estimate of that on the North Ninth one. And I'm, I'm kind of like Mayor Bynum. It's hard to prioritize when we don't know what the project's going to cost. So if we can come up with some of those numbers, that might be helpful for us.
And that's.
But at this point, if there was a pro- project that we were really, I mean, we just thought that was such a cool idea without regard to price. Is that the kind of feedback? Because I think that I'm reading, for my feelings and some of my fellow counselors, that we really want to address some sidewalks in the La Raza neighborhood. And that the sooner the better. And that we want to keep talking about the Woodgate realignment. There's, no reason to change that. It's been, we've been talking about it for years. We're going forward. Um, versus on, let me just look for one that I am not as excited about and say, well, that just doesn't seem like, I, I don't know what would come on that. Um, I can't scroll because it's your screen. But there we go. I tried to scroll and it didn't work. Um, maybe it's, maybe it's less about saying that we're not excited and. Maybe it's, maybe it's less about saying that we're not excited and about some projects, but really highlighting those like you just did, that we are excited about, that we feel like we've heard about in our roles as listeners to our community, that people have been talking to us about.
I think that's,
That's obviously better.
Looking at street repairs, one that we hear a lot about. And I think also from a Tortillas Flat standpoint, their biggest concern are sidewalks on Fourth and Ninth for the children to, to get across to go to school. And that could, that could be an increased problem with development in Colorado outdoors, that we might need to consider.
Scott, I hear a lot about the sidewalk on Ogden, and I, there's always been a good reason why the city isn't, taking off, why that project is so big and so expensive. I don't know, but that's one I hear about.
Yeah, I hear that one a lot, also, that one's a really big elephant to, to eat, so the, we don't have a lot of the right-of-way, there's a lot of irrigation immediately alongside the field, so it, it ended up being, four hundred dollar per foot type projects by the time you get, or three hundred per foot. By the time you get all the right-of-way issues where it ironed out, all the irrigation and then get separated, only to, you know, likely be in the way when Ogden is widened at some point. You know, the whole, ten-plus million dollar projects, and I, I've evaluated all the various, you know, just sidewalk only, dirt trail, you know, all these things, and I can send you that email if it's beneficial, those numbers, but, it's, it's, it's no small project, I guess.
Sure.
There's nothing crazy with it.
Trying to think of, of the kinds of things people bring to our attention, people bring to my attention a lot that, you know, we made that cool trail that goes from basically the bridges and cuts through into sixty-seven hundred road. And where there's been discussion that it might someday be a road, is that, am I, is it called something and is it on this list, or should it be on?
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's one of the, so in the capital plan, if we get time, you guys want to go to the capital plan, we certainly can, so, the capital plan identifies kind of all the major, projects that would likely, you know, see through the next twenty years or so.
Okay, but what you put in front of this?
That one's identified as one of the top three priorities. And, you know, I went to say, here's, here's what we see as the highest priority, but capital improvements are very dynamic and change with, you know, councils and feedback and development and traffic pattern changes, things of that sort, but we just pull up the map from that. So the capital plan does show, you know, kind of all these major long-range projects that are on the radar. Prices for each in the, in present dollars, so, you know, each year three to five percent, but those are escalating. And then goes as far to kind of recommend the top three, so Woodgate realignment was top on the list. And then the other two was the North Park reconstruction and the extension of East Oak Grove. So they're in here and we have dollars for them, I didn't put them in here in this immediate plan, knowing that, the Woodgate realignment was, as we understood, the highest priority and likely to take up most of the capital dollars going into twenty-one, especially with the pandemic.
So what you basically are saying is, yes, we know, but the list we had in front of us a minute ago is specific to twenty twenty-one, and, is it still true with, that we all think the Woodgate realignment is the next big project? And I think,
Yeah, and that's a great discussion point of, is it, are we in agreement there?
Yeah, I hope so, because we've been planning, I mean, we put the planning for it in the twenty twenty budget, which would lead you to believe that doing it should be in the twenty twenty-one budget.
Yeah, and we promised people that.
So what, and, and then when it comes to planning, what, what should be, maybe that's what you're saying about public works, is that that is in the planning for twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, and if you want to, you know, North Park redesigned in-house, that one, you know, if that's number two on the list and you wanted to build that in twenty-two, it's essentially ready to go, so, we're sitting pretty good in the planning front. This design is sixty percent done back ten years ago, so it just has to be updated to modern standards, but, I think that would probably, if you're, if you were to go in this order, and again, I, I, we want feedback, we want it to be a collective decision, but, if you were to go in this order, you would probably design that in twenty-two, in twenty-three.
We should put some design money towards the North Park reconstruction for twenty-one then.
Um, we designed that in-house, so.
Okay, we don't need to put a big,
Yeah, yeah, I'm straightforward enough that we have to,
I got it, you said that, now I understand what you mean, yeah, thanks.
So on that Oak Grove extension, we would probably in twenty-one want to start dedicating money and thought toward, establishing right-aways and easements and all of that.
So on that one, the right-of-way is fully established, it was dedicated with the latest filing in Bridges, so that one, unfortunately, comp plan was in place at that time and identified it, and so as development occurred, we got the right-of-ways, there's no land issues there. And it's just doing the, finalizing the design.
And it's already a trail, so we've already established that and people are used to it. If I can just throw in one thing, so I think it would be good feedback, to let you know what we are expecting for twenty twenty-one, and then you tell us if you want us to throw one of those things off the radar. Because if we start adding more and more things, we're gonna have to drop off what we all planned over the last two to three years and we've told the community we're doing. So I think that's the biggest thing that we need guidance on. Because we only have money to do two or three capital projects next year, that was the plan all along. So amphitheater construction, Woodgate realignment construction, and, just whatever's left toward a major street improvement was our plan. And then the, a lot of the feedback from the North, Fourth, North, Ninth neighborhoods came just recently, and we were actually, planning to go before council this year, because I heard from council members you wanted to do it right away, you didn't want to wait until next year. And we would go for a formal vote to take money out of reserve to do the improvements to that neighborhood this year. So that wouldn't affect next year's budget either. So that, that's what we are headed for. If we, but we need to know, do you want to not do the amphitheater? It's the same as Woodgate, we've made promises and the community expects it, and we have community partners who put money toward it. All these things can be shifted around, but that's where we were headed, unless we hear red flags from council that we need to add something new that we didn't think of, or we need to drop something off that we were planning.
Well, I think amphitheater is something that we have been, we promised and then have been putting it off in order to gather the money. But if we put it off too much longer, we're gonna lose those community support partners. So I want to make sure that, I would advocate for continuing in the plan we already have established.
Yeah, Bill, when you put it that way, this is what we've been planning on for years, is this still the plan? Then that makes it much simpler, I mean, I mean, I mean, for me, my answer is yes. You're right, we got a little too like, what else do we want to do in the next five years, and that's not what we're supposed to be doing today.
So one comment I wanted to throw at Scott, the, the bridge, that Birch Bridge is a kind of thing that, people don't think about bridges, you don't even hardly know they exist until they collapse, and, so I think we need to rely on your professional judgment when that needs to be taken care of, and not let it get so bad that then it ends up costing twice as much to fix as it would if you did it earlier.
I would, I would highly recommend that project.
Well, then I, then I think we ought to just put that in there and not ignore it.
And that's just from, you know, it's, it's a compromised foundation and it's, it's danger numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, nobody cares until all of a sudden there's crisis and, and then, and then we're in all kinds of trouble.
And it's a chip away from two, I mean, we have a lot of bridge liabilities and they're critical infrastructures.
Scott, is that something that has to be done after the irrigation season is over?
Yep, so we'll do it like we did, so it's on the Lutz and Heizer, so we do it the same as the one we did on Otter Road about four years ago. Start in January and, or December, January and, and be done by March.
That was such a beautiful project.
Something that might be helpful for me is projects like Bill had mentioned that we are already planning and committed to doing. It's kind of confusing having this on a potential projects list. If, if we could highlight the ones that are, we're already planning on doing that, that's already in the works, on the plan, in the, in the go, rather than putting on this as a potential project, I think that's a little bit what confuses me. It's like, well, if, if we're committed to this, is it a potential project?
Well, I mean, until the council, yeah, and, and we're just careful to never push anything, you know, so, well, it's anything's a potential, but.
I mean, none of these, until we vote on them in November or October, whenever, these are all potential, Dave, because last,
I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, last year's council can't tell this year's council what they have to do, so.
But, but, like, exactly what Scott's doing, just kind of highlighting those things that, council has already expressed an opinion on, both past councils and current council, just what he's doing right there, I think that, that, that puts a good, I don't know, perspective on it for me to look at that and say, okay, those are, we already got kind of committed to.
Sure.
Even though we're not financially bound to those yet.
Sure.
It's like a major progress.
I'd add the water tank to that, we spend a lot of time talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, enterprise are always easy because they're well-funded and standard things, so.
So Scott, do, since there isn't money attached to this, you, I forget what you called it, I think of it as a menu. Can, I mean, can we, can we go forward with all of these, or do you need us to pick five we don't, we don't want to do?
No, I think, I, I think the intent is to get, you know, because we don't want to spend a lot of money going down, a lot of those, we've talked about the big ones, a lot of the other ones are pretty small, so I think, you know, we'll fine-tune the dollars and then see what we have, see what fits. I think we're interested, if there's stuff that you think is a waste of time or no, that's just a trade thing, that's not a, not a benefit to the overall community or, you know, heck knows, I guess, if there's any heck knows out there, we'd like to know about them. And this is what you talked about, and then the others, we can just work with massaging to see what fits and, and how priorities, morph through the budget process.
So that Ceres Park gravel overflow parking lot, there's not a lot of money at all and it's in-house, I'm just wondering, should we wait and see once the amphitheater is built? Because I'd hate to do a gravel overflow lot and then decide two years later that we really should do a paved parking lot.
That was our, that was our plan, was that wouldn't happen until we have a need for it.
Okay.
And gravel, just turning it into a gravel thing is pretty inexpensive.
Okay.
The little sliver, the triangle one, all of you might not know what we're talking about on that one, that Ceres Park Triangle Remnant. And that is where that slope is on the hogback, a lot of people slide down it and there's liability associated with that piece. The landowners expressed interest in selling that little piece to us so we can take over the liability on it. Otherwise, they want us to sign it, tell people to keep off of it and try to enforce that.
Madam Mayor, could I make a, a comment on the capital projects?
Of course you may.
The, I think that there, every council starts these, starts projects and they, these take a long time. And some of these are projects started by councilors that are no longer on council, and they have to take their turn because the previous council had started projects that were three, four, five years in the making. So I think, yes, you have the authority and the duty to either approve funding or not approve funding, but a lot of times, because so much money and effort, and research has gone into preparing these, council says, we owe it to a previous council to continue, finish out that plan, that legacy, because ours is going to take a couple of years, so, I mean, part of it is starting to think, what do you guys want? To be what happens in two, three years from now.
That's a great perspective, thank you. Scott Murphy, were you gonna show us a triangle?
Oh, yeah, so that's the, that's that piece there, so whether we get, you know, just a piece to clean up this corner, which I don't know the history on that, or, this is where people run up that hill, you know, maybe the city owns, buys that whole slope, which was essentially unusable land.
Sure. Can you point to the gravel parking lot area and make sure I'm understanding where?
So this is the overflow area here. So, you know, that one, that one, there's some weird property lines down there.
For sure.
Scott, out of curiosity, how many parking spaces are available in those areas?
Um, so it'd essentially be almost doubling your parking lot. Gravel are usually a little more inefficient, so if at events, if you have someone coordinating it, I haven't counted the numbers, but, you know, over a hundred.
Thank you.
So I got a question for Bill, and maybe I didn't understand what he said, but it puzzles me why we would buy a piece of property in order to assume liability on behalf of now owning it, I mean, why not let the current owner have all that liability?
So, uh, there's some issues with the land there where we actually have a parking lot that's not on city property. A lot, line issues in the past, and so Stephen and Scott and I are working through that to clean all that up.
Oh, I see, okay, I, I didn't appreciate that.
It's just one of those deals in, there's just lots of different survey lines in Montrose.
Also, it's kind of the aspect of, if we, we have to buy that little corner, buying enough to make it worth buying.
Okay, maybe we make that next, what's that hill climb thing on the Front Range, you know?
Yeah, I want to do the thing like they have in Colorado Springs, just build a huge staircase.
I thought Jewish Hyde was working on that for us up to the top, I thought he already started and I think it looks really good.
Yeah, I think I had that idea a couple of years ago, railroad ties, you know, just stair step all the way to the top, I'll, I'll do it.
Do we get a zip line coming down?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm still working on the zip line, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so getting us back on track. What other, I mean, in terms of this list, does anyone else see anything that they, they think should wait or should be rise to the top of priorities or that isn't clear? And again, this is still big picture. And if you,
Scott, could you move it back your page one?
And, and also things that may be missing too, if there's, so if you heard about that, we just plain haven't made it to that degree too.
Well, the only thing I see on there myself that I think would be a easily put on the back burner is the Ceres Park gravel overflow. Even though it's only sixty-five thousand, that's still sixty-five thousand that we could potentially dedicate toward another project.
And there's quite a bit being spent in, in one already on the amphitheater itself, so yeah, that's,
And I agree with what Mayor Bynum says, that until the amphitheater is actually finished, that that's almost a moot point.
Isn't, aren't we building, when, when do we think the amphitheater is gonna open?
After it's,
If we start in early twenty-one, by fall of twenty-one, it would be completed.
Gotcha, twenty, so twenty twenty-one, like, so.
It'd be about eight months of construction.
So if we push that gravel parking lot into twenty-two, that would make good sense.
We've also talked about the option, depending on the final, we need to revise and make sure that's an accurate cost estimate, I just emailed these guys too, but, it doesn't make sense to me that it increased by one point four million since nine months ago, so, find those numbers. One other idea we had was rather than build it all in twenty twenty-one, we start building it and cross over into twenty twenty-two, and then it would be up and ready to operate the spring of twenty twenty-two. So that's an option as well.
It does seem like every time we turn around, it costs more, and that's always been a concern that I've had, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have to fine-tune that, because going into twenty twenty's budget, we were only seven hundred thousand dollars short on construction of the amphitheater. So we were gonna take seven hundred thousand out of the twenty- So we were going to take seven hundred thousand out of the twenty-twenty-one capital budget. Which could still leave about two million dollars for street improvements and other general fund capital improvements. So I need to meet with the staff on that.
Okay. So after this list, Bill or Shaney, what, what kind of input? Other than capital projects, do you want to talk about with council in regards to a big picture for the budget? I mean, are you, are you planning any major changes to city staffing levels? Or operations or anything else we should know about now? So it doesn't surprise us in the fall?
I think we've been pretty. Open in our dialogue related to the police staffing and, and, and the police funding and the police project. Obviously that's going to be a really big impact on us. And so Jim's doing a good job and Blaine. Working with the contractors and moving that forward and we're going to try to keep that. On budget or under budget. And so, but that would be a big piece. And then just trying to keep up with attrition. And recruitment and hiring and backfilling employees as they leave. We're not going to change our practice. We're still going to follow the practice of when somebody leaves the city, we analyze whether we need that position or not. Or if it could be folded into other existing positions to save money. Uh, and, and we'll only backfill when necessary with full-time employees with benefits. So we'll continue to do that. But we know, right now I have a list of, uh, ten positions. Uh, not counting the new police officer positions that we're going to have to fill at the city. Uh, just due to attrition and email will be coming out in addition to what Terry Wilcox already sent you guys, I think yesterday. So we'll keep moving that forward. We would like to still continue our practice of trying to analyze the market. Every two years and adjust, uh, base salaries of our city employees to make sure we're a competitive employer. Uh, we don't want to be the lowest paying city in Western Colorado. We don't want to be the highest paying city in Western Colorado. Want to be, you know, right there in the middle. And so, and so far council's always, uh, been on the same page as far as that. So we would continue that effort, uh, of, of doing wage increases based on each particular job and where the market is for that job. And, you know, if, if the numbers don't, as of right now, the latest number Shaney shared with us is. Our budget isn't being hit as, as bad as we thought it might, because the big box stores are really saving us. As far as our retail sales revenues. But that's, the next couple of months will, will tell us a lot too. But we're not paying right now. We've also, uh, we've shared with all of you our plans this year. Immediately once COVID, uh, took shape, we didn't hire a lot of seasonals at the city and. And slowed down on some projects and things. So just right off the bat, we were able to conserve, uh, almost two hundred thousand dollars. And as of right now, that's more than we've lost. So, or, you know, it's kind of a wash.
Do, do you see, if, if you think of the city as a business, do you see any long-term implications to our budget? That are, have been affected by COVID, some, some, something that we have to do differently than we. Have been doing in the past that is a finding, a big financial hit. I mean, for example, if we didn't, if, if some computers currently, I mean, if some staffers currently shared a computer, the idea that everyone would need their own. Or if we had police officers that shared vehicles, but the idea that everyone would need their own. Those currently are, are moot because that's already how we do things. But is there something that's just shifted the whole way we do work? Because of COVID that's going to impact our budget?
He must have some ideas that I'm not aware of.
Well, we, we have, uh, discussed it that, um, we'll just move everyone to laptops. Uh, the majority of people did have laptops, so, uh, the working from home was fairly easy, but. There was, uh, a fair amount of people that did have desktops that, you know, made it difficult. So we're. Looking at when we replace those desktops, when it comes time to, um, replacing them with laptops. Laptops are typically a little bit more expensive. Um. Everything's changed right now because COVID has affected all of those sorts of, uh, supply chains and the. The demand for them is really pushed the prices up. So we're hoping that by next year, when, uh, when. Our twenty-twenty-one replacements come in, that the prices will come back down and it won't be as, um. Big as a hit, uh, as, as it is right now, but that is something that we're going to plan for.
But in the big picture, you're talking twenty thousand dollars or less, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking big picture, but that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Something that just shifts the way we as a, as a business do our business. That this is a good time to think about that instead of. And the answer, maybe there's nothing that, that changes, that nothing like that. I mean, the idea of taking a temperature check as you come to work is radically different and yet doesn't affect our budget in any way. So. It may be a moot point. I'm just brainstorming.
Yeah, budget. I mean, in the big picture, I don't think, uh, anything that's a huge cost, but things we've been talking about is. Uh, putting partition glass for the customer service techs in the lobby of City Hall permanently. Well, that would be an expense that wasn't budgeted. Uh, you know, it's going to be several thousand dollars to do something like that and, and we need to make the decision. Do we want to just do plexiglass or do we want to truly renovate the lobby of City Hall to modern day standards? And put bulletproof glass in, uh, to protect the workers there along plan for the next fifty years instead of just doing some patchwork. Uh, those types of things, uh, security over at, at court and. Oh, potential, we didn't talk about that yet, but renovating the existing PD building. Is going to be something on the horizon after we construct the PD building. We're going to move legal and court over into the existing building and maybe code enforcement. We're brainstorming that idea as well. To save space in the new police department. Um, Blaine will ultimately make those decisions, but. Uh, so we've been brainstorming those types of things. But it really are, we were set up pretty, uh. Greg did such a great job. He actually relocated desktops for people to their homes. So they could work from home with their desktop that they were used to working with and. And our workforce was really flexible and so they were able to be creative and do things in a pretty minimal cost. Pay for those from FEMA, but we're, we're not, we're not holding our breath on that.
What about from a revenue side of things? The golf course seems to be doing great, but what if the pavilion really struggles for a year? Does that, how does that impact our budget?
So the. The golf course is doing okay. I don't know if I would say it's great. I don't think the golf course is ever going to be great.
Sure.
In, in the red, but as far as a golf course is concerned, it's doing pretty good.
It's all relative.
This year, yeah, it's all relative and this year it's very busy. So we're actually really, really good on the number of rounds.
But just at the same time, rounds are up, we're doing very well there, but merchandise is down. So from the outside, it looks great, but is. That there is a little bit of a downside and that's our merchandise.
But in the long term, it's the most productive city park we have.
Oh, I, I, I'm not arguing that. I'm just suggesting that, yes, the rounds of golf are up. But I'm also aware that merchandise is down.
That's just Dave's way of asking us all to go buy a polo shirt.
Like I need another one.
One of the comments I wanted to make, uh, Bill just brought up a few minutes ago, but I think it's worth reiterating. And that is maintaining the, the way we take care of our employees in terms of salaries, raises, all those things. Being very competitive, not, not the best paying on the western slope, but not the worst either. And, uh, and, and keeping our most valuable. Uh, employees, you know, satisfied and on the job. So. I think that that is a budget priority in my mind, uh, so that we can continue. The practices that have been working for the last few years. And I want to thank Bill for his management skills in that area. It's been really good.
I, I know that we're excited about having the Montrose Police Academy and I see Billy Stroop is with us. Can you remind us, um, on council, are there additional costs and are they coming out of the? Where, and if there are, where are they coming out of? What, what account?
Um, yeah, there are going to, there are going to be some additional costs. Um, as of right now, I don't actually really know where they're coming from. I've put together a budget for that. But I think some of it's going to be CMU, but some of it's going to be the city as well. Some of it should be the county, but I'm not really actually sure how vested, you know, they're going to be in all of it as far as financially. You know, they're going to provide instructors. I just don't know financially how much they're going to put into it.
But I think it's going to say council's supportive of that for next year's budget.
I can add a little to that and then Blaine too. Um, thanks Billy for that. So the. On where the money is coming from, we, we entered an MOU with CMU. Uh, and the, the county sheriff's department. And so we are splitting the cost. On a prorata basis, uh, for Billy as the director with CMU. And then we have, uh. Shared use agreements for the CMU facility for classroom space and that type of thing. And then instructors coming over from the county sheriff's department. And so there's soft costs and hard costs associated with those things. Uh, and then as part of that partnership. The, uh, we're guaranteed so many slots for, for our cadets as well as the sheriff's department in, in exchange for teaching. And then we will be sharing some of the burden on the cost of ammunition and some of those types of things with CMU. And materials and, and all of those types of things that go along with providing an educational institution. And then once we build the new police department, a lot of that will be rolled into that facility. And so the tactical training. Uh, you know, a lot of the, the fitness type stuff, uh, probably not driving a vehicle inside our new building, but. Um, a lot of those other hand-to-hand type training scenarios will be in our new building. And then, uh. Maybe continue to use the academic space at CMU here in Montrose or use. A classroom space in the new building. We haven't really got to that point yet because it's still in its infancy. Billy's working hard with CMU to get, uh, credentialing all done and licensure up so we can get running next summer. And so it's a cost sharing a- agreement. Uh, it, and to answer your question, where exactly it's coming from, it's coming out of two A money. Because it's part of the intelligence-led policing model and it's also. A big effort to recruit the number of police officers we need to recruit under the hiring model of two A. Uh, having a school right here in Montrose is going to be not only beneficial to us and fill our needs, but also the entire region. It's one of the only, uh, summer police academies open to the general public. That's not tied to a specific department. So it'll actually be a, a revenue source for the community when those students come in and live in our community for. Uh, the entire time they're in classes and eating at restaurants and that kind of thing. Does that answer your question?
And recognizing that it's still very early in this entire vision of this. As numbers become available, it would be kind of nice for us to have a vision of those. So as numbers become clear, if you could provide those to council, that'd be very helpful.
We have some stuff we can email you right away. We, we'll send that over.
I, I also think that's why we meet again though in just a few months. Um, and then, you know, we didn't even used to meet in May. But this gave us a chance on city council to make sure that we were on the same page as staff. It isn't necessarily. To look over their shoulder for the next five months as they work on it. It's just to make sure that they don't come to us in the fall with project. A and us say, oh my gosh, we had no idea you even working on that. So. And I mean, I like, I like keeping us informed, but our job isn't really to. Keep tabs on everything as they work on it. They work really hard between now and the fall. And we'll have a chance to look at it again in a lot of detail. Is that, Dave, I'm not trying to disagree with you, but I kind of am disagreeing with you, I guess, a little bit.
Oh, no, I, I, what I'm looking at is, uh, just for our own edification. Uh, on the two A issues, since we're using two A money. Being able to answer questions about where that money is being spent, how it's being spent. And to be able to answer commit questions in the community as to how great this program is going to be. I'm, I'm not talking about micromanaging or having control over any of the money. But just being able to answer questions from us to our constituents. It would be just helpful to be able to be able to have some solid information on that.
And are you speaking specifically about two A?
I'm speaking specifically about the police academy.
Okay, oh, about the police academy.
Strictly about the police academy.
Okay.
Yeah, because as those, those numbers directly relate to promises we made to the community.
Okay. And I think that's why the two A report card exists and let's make sure to add police academy information to the, to a report card. Maybe that's a way to do that. Okay. I thought you were saying on like Scott Murphy's list, you wanted an update and okay, I misunderstood.
No, I just thought it would be beneficial to have that two A report card include the police academy as we're moving forward. Because I think it's an incredibly positive thing for our community. And I think I want to brag about it.
I think one of the things too, and Shaney may be able to comment, um. We just recently did is create an accounting code. Because we're concerned about wanting to track those expenses as well. Um, keeping in mind the higher level of things, it is a partnership between the county and CMU and, uh. When they contribute, when the county contributes, um, instructors, that, that is a financial resource that they are contributing. Um, but we just want to make sure internally that we are tracking all of those numbers so that. We can't have an accurate report just like what you, you just said. So just a little update there. But thanks for that input. We will add that to the two A card.
Okay. Is there anything else that Shaney or Bill that you wanted input from, from council on at this point? Or is this how you hope this direction of this conversation would go? Have we provided what you need to work on the budget for the next few months? Yes?
Shaney is nodding her head. She looks satisfied. Uh, I, I, I just don't want. I don't want to come to the budget and then council say, hey, why didn't we think of this huge million dollar project? So. Uh, I, I think we've heard a lot of good ideas from you and, and direction so we can go back and run some numbers and. And put numbers to these projects and, and get you information. Prior, you know, as we usually do, through that full day.
Right. Because renovating the old police facility is not part of the two A money. And, and would come out of our general fund. Is it too early to start spending money in twenty-twenty-one on that design?
I, yeah, I don't think we want to do that yet. I think, uh, when we get closer. I think twenty-twenty-two would make sense. Jim, would you agree with that?
Yeah, we had talked about the sequence of, um. City Hall and the existing police department and, um, renovation and transfer employees between the two. And my recommendation would be we do city hall first. Um, that way we have somewhere to put city hall employees during that transition. So. That's what we had talked about last and, and doing that means we wouldn't have to do any of it in twenty-one. Um, that would start in twenty-two as the police department is finished.
And just as a pressure for council and, and for, uh, Dave. Might not be in the, in the know on what you're referring to a city hall. There's some major renovations that need to take place to. Uh, the roof, different things with the city hall building and the annex. That would displace our work city hall. That's what Jim's referring to. It's been on the books for over a decade. It's just one of those deals that keeps getting pushed to the back burner and we didn't have any place to put employees. So it actually works out well to have a location where we can shove them across the street while we work over here.
Great.
Can I make a, another comment on a different subject? Are we talking about the police and, um, two A? I don't want to change this.
Scott kind of had his hand up too. Scott.
Okay, that, that was another loose end, so that wasn't two A related. So go ahead, Roy.
Okay. Council Anderson, what's up?
Well, I, I was just looking at Chelsea and, and I'm thinking about as we come out of COVID, whenever that happens in the future. Um, I think it'll be important again to have incentives. To bring new businesses to town to, to create jobs and get people working again. And I just want to make sure that we have somehow. Uh, accounted for that and, and are able, uh, in the last couple of years, uh, Chelsea would come to us with a. A new business and we'd allocate some money. And I never quite knew where it came from, but it always seemed to be there. So I just want to make sure. We kind of continue that trend in the future. I think it will be really important. We kind of continue that trend in the future. I think it will be really important. Uh as we rebuild our economy, so just, I don't know how you factor that in, but keep thinking about it.
Yeah, I can comment on that a little bit. So things have been moving forward on the business. Uh expansion and business attraction even during covid. So, you know, Culvers is being built, Golden Gate, Maverick. Uh there's a lot of commercial construction projects that are taking place, and then the work with Chad Horning and Matt Miles. And then still the U R A stuff that's moving forward. Montrose Dermatology becoming before City Council, uh hopefully in the near future. And so we've still been moving forward with all those things. Uh assuming that uh we still want to do that because I we haven't been told otherwise. And a big part of why we've been successful as a community is in the world of business development. And so unless we hear otherwise, we're going to just continue that practice and bring those projects forward to City Council and. And hopefully we can uh make good things happen, but there's been a lot of interest. In that world, it really hasn't s- slowed down much.
That's interesting. That's really good.
I know, Roy, you were kidding on not knowing where the money came from, but just since we have an audience today. Uh it comes from our general fund reserve. And it proves that when we when we pull that money out.
Yeah, I kind of knew that, but at the same time, it's it's nice the way it works, and I want to. Just be sure it continues. At least that's my feeling, one out of five.
We're able to do that because we we we're conservative and we carry, you know, right now, seven and a half to eight months. Of general operating reserve. And so when we bring projects forward, we're always asked, do we have the money to do it? And we gauge that on how well is our reserve fund sitting compared to our six month operating target? And thankfully, each year for the last several years, we've had more than. What our target reserve is, and that gives us the flexibility to make.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. So back to Scott Murphy. Do you have another loose end to tie up here?
Oh, yeah. So I think the one that I hit on, but I don't think we closed out um was the river project and the U R A, the one point one million. Um so again, the primary note's been approved, but we do have the option to either do it this winter, which as originally intended, so twenty. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, so it'd be November to March or push that into starting the end of twenty twenty one.
And you said that would have no impact on the grant, but what what are the advantages of pushing it out?
Um mostly if there's, if money's going to be tighter and there's higher priorities, this year it gives us a chance to. You know, use those, not encounter those funds. Um. And I I think there's a public perception element of it too, because it is a softer need in trying times if there's a desire to push that out.
Do does that have any impact on the bank stabilization, the river moving around and perhaps putting part of. The current development at risk? I mean, is there? Any downside there?
No, the the immediate needs have been addressed. The largest instability area was that one we had last June um along the northern Oxford area. Um that'll get fine tuned with this project, but it's 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 stable. For table future.
Okay, wow.
Yeah, Scott and I were talking about uh this recently and. I guess what I what I had told Scott is if if there's, there'll have, that's what we wanted to talk to all of you about. If we have Woodgate realignment, construction project is a really high priority because. This to San Juan subdivision expects that. Uh when we did the the extension of Hillcrest. And if Rotary and the community is expecting the amphitheater, since we've saved up for several years, we've actually delayed it one year already. Um we might recommend postponing this a year if it's okay with council to make sure that we're able to do those items. And then do this the following year. But saying that, there's also a group of. Fisher type people who are really worried about this project, and they want it done now because they're excited about going and doing trout fishing in that area once the habitat's been restored. But definitely, we analyzed the Scott did uh on the grant side, him and Kendall. And uh would we have three years, I think, Scott, to do that construction?
Uh I think that's sound reasoning.
Bill, have we got anywhere in our long, long range plans about the extension on sixty seven hundred road? Between Miami and Sunnyside.
It's on the long term plan list.
Yep, so it's it's specifically addressed in the uh long range capital plan. Nice email that to everybody. Um. That's a short read. It's only two pages and then various figures and stuff. So I'd recommend reading it. It's a good. Kind of gives you a good history of where we're at. To me, that one's a little lower priority given the volume. So. You know, as urban development occurs, the core belt routes are kind of most important. So an eastern belt route. So Hillcrest and then the Hillcrest reali- uh Woodgate realignment, so you have a route to staff at Townsend on the east side of town. And then West Side Arterial, so you know, acquisition of the railroad right away, West Side Arterial, but also extension of Rio Grande down to. Um the southern end uh down to River Landing to give alternate routes throughout town and keep that congestion down. Um the towns and capacities, you know, about to go off a cliff type thing. Um.
And also, if I can. We based our three year plan on those things on that community survey that we did. So we did that household community survey in two thousand sixteen. And uh sixty seven hundred road fell lower on the list than the ones we've been doing, the Hillcrest extension, the Woodgate. And some of those, so we also base it on the community needs assessment, which we'll need to. Budget for another one in twenty twenty one or twenty twenty.
Right, and to that regard, we're about to finish up our our master. Um plan, and it drives a lot of the decisions we make. Is there anything in that master plan that would drive a twenty twenty one budget decision at this point? Or do we think the results of that master plan drive a twenty twenty two budget decision at the earliest?
I think, and Ann might have more knowledge than me or or better ideas than me, but on the comprehensive planning piece. Because we've delayed it a little bit because of the way we're meeting and can't meet in person and and some of those things. We still need to have a joint city council planning commission meeting to go over some of those things. We had the. Various meetings of the conference, the planning advisory committee. And Ann and I and Amy have been meeting on a regular basis. Finalizing a lot of that draft, so then that can go to the joint city council planning commission meeting to review that final draft. Um I think by the time we get done with all that process, it's going to be too late to drop a lot of that into the twenty twenty one budget. So I think the earliest would be twenty twenty two or. Mid twenty twenty one, council could make the decision, hey, this is a really high priority. Let's just pull it out of reserve and do it now.
Right, so. We could always use reserves to implement that, but in terms of anything big coming out of it. It's too early to say that is what I'm hearing.
I would agree, and I would also say that. Um you will be starting likely to consider policy changes. Early in twenty twenty one as a part of that comprehensive plan process. So it's um you'll still have. You'll be implementing it even if it's not through capital improvements.
Right, there's the.
Example of that.
Those go hand in hand. There are things we're going to do differently in how we do things, and then there's things we're going to spend money on, and we can start doing things differently. With before we start spending money is what you're.
Yeah, for example, um I you, you know, there's a lot of focus on different types of housing options and making them available. In Montrose, and so um council may consider code amendments or zoning amendments, and you recently have. That would um change um or add um to how we zone our community, maybe make updates to the redo district, for example. Um to encourage the kind of development that you want to see. So again, not investing money. But considering policy changes that could still have really positive implications in our community, even in the short term.
That sounds fun because we get to do policy and budget. It's two of our pieces of our job, so let's do some. Okay. Um a lot of folks um here that have been quiet, department heads or I or or police commanders. Did anyone um on city staff who's been here this whole time? Want to chime in? Because I don't want anyone to feel like they didn't get a chance to to say something. Okay. Please, if you think of it while I'm talking. So I I thank you, everyone um from council and from our city leadership who is here. And also to our attendees, is what they're called on my Zoom screen, the attendees who watched. As I said at the beginning, um this is a work session that is our opportunity as council to talk through ideas with. With our city leadership team. Um and we do it in front of the public, but it isn't necessarily the right forum. Um for the public to ask questions and engage. But we do welcome follow up comments. So as you listen to this and you have thoughts. Or concerns or questions, please shoot an email to other city council. Or to city staff. If you email all of council through the website, it goes to all of us and we all get it. Um we always want to know what you're thinking, even though this particular work session was not set up as a a forum for public input. Um we always welcome that if you've listened in and um you want to follow up with us. Great. Anybody think of anything while I was chatting? Okay. Then I think we're done. Shani, are we done as far as you're concerned? Was this what you hoped to achieve?
Yes, definitely. So just to have conversation.
Great, and and council can follow up with you or anybody or with Bill if they have further thoughts and ideas that this sparked. Don't save them till October. Okay, great, fantastic. Then we're going to end this and we'll see most of you again for our city council meeting. At six o'clock tonight.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Thanks, Shani.